Tony, first of all, can you hear us okay?
Great.
Good.
Yeah, everybody can hear him. Can I hear more than one word so I can make sure I can hear you?
How are you guys all doing today?
All right, good.
That's all good.
I think I'm just gonna turn the one. Remote up just to smidgen. I know this is all the way up, but. This might help too. Tony, could I have you say one more like A, B, C, D, E, F, G?
Or how's everybody doing? Is it's it looks a lot nicer there than it does in Bemidji right now, but I was excited to get a Zoom link today.
I was thinking about you guys because I went to Bemidji and back this morning. So I was like. I bet that there's gonna be some people that don't want to come up here tonight.
I would have made the drive.
I've got six o'clock, so we'll call meeting order. Christina, you have the roll.
Yeah, let me just get Mike down.
Yep.
You know, you can sit up here, Mike. Now he likes to over there. He's protected. I don't know why.
Yep.
Oh, I better get the recorder too. Okay, now I think I. That's going.
All right.
And that's going.
I'll dispense with the pledge unless there's a objection. If I could get approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve for tonight's agenda.
You have a motion and a second. One in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Full business. Do we want to move something around?
Uh, I don't think we need to. However, Mike, I put some notes in your box for. The new item is stuck in old business tonight. I had a phone conversation with Caleb tonight. Was possibly gonna be on tonight's call, but I don't know. Uh, what I can tell you on the P E R is they're still waiting for some callbacks from. The feds on a couple of things on the report, so they don't have any more progress on the P E R E R report. Right at council to discuss tonight. So we can leave that one as such.
Is there a certain agency we're waiting on or?
No. Caleb didn't elaborate, so I don't have enough details to tell you.
All right. To the library.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks for the handout. Uh, I put something in your packet tonight, just as an as an info. Kelly Hanks was provided to this and so was Lori by Melissa Wheatley from Kitchigami at the beginning of the month. I made plans to line up with Kelly and discuss some of the. Q and A periods that close this week and next week on this grant opportunity. But in speaking with Melissa last week and Lori this week. I think what I just want to explain to the council is this is a golden opportunity. But we're not prepared to even apply for anything here. We've had no conversations. We don't have any plans. We don't have any estimates. And. It's difficult to put pen to paper for a grant opportunity when you have nothing, right? And I'm not gonna throw the numbers out of the sky. As I read through some of this as well, there's for construction and even remodel, there's legislative. Backing that would have had to happen with this progress. So. What I really want to explain to the council at this point is. Yes, this is a great opportunity. It's not a ton of money. It's open to public as well as private libraries. They don't have to be, you know, through like a regional library. Like ours, but four million dollars is not a ton of money for the entire state. And this is a perfect example of why. We need to come to some understanding of what we want to do. And start some plans so that if this gets kicked around in the next. Budget or next biannual legislative session that we have an opportunity to offset our costs. But what Melissa did inform me is that this would be an opportunity where the capital. Improvement funds that Kitchigami has earmarked for Black Duck would be our match. So again, if I mean, all the stars kind of align except for the fact that we're not ready.
Is. And there's no way no one is gonna come up again.
There isn't. I mean, these types of these types of opportunities are all legislative driven max. So every year when they do it, it always seems. Like a great thing to do, but you. As somebody that's written grants before and not super in-depth grants. It's not fun to have something like this thrown at you. And then try to change the way the stars align to make it work for you last minute. But no, there's no way of telling that. Money will be there later. However, on the flip side to that, you can, you know. In your position as a council member, you can, you know. Tell legislators that. You know, we could use this, you know, is there any way that this could run again to years from now? Where we would be ready in maybe twenty-six to do something.
Have we had that conversation with the library yet? Have they met? No, they're not gonna.
Not until April.
April. So. And when we do. Yeah, we then we can find out a better idea of what we.
Yeah.
I I mean, obviously, you know, giving a grant big enough to. Build something brand new was. Probably not in my farce, but.
No, and it's a very competitive grant run too. If you've run through.
Yeah, I see how.
Point system. We would most likely be high ranked in that because we're a low. Income house, low income household city. So we'd get some more points, but we really need to have our ducks in a row first.
Yeah. Because personally, I think, you know. In addition. To what we have now would be a good starting point. But. We'd still we still need all those numbers. And like I said, we'll talk at the library after. I don't wanna. Say anything to others.
Absolutely. And I and and when I join Lori next month, I'm more than happy to.
Yeah.
Feed it exactly the way I did. I just. Yes, opportunities come around and you have to grab them, but you also need to be ready to grab them.
So. Good. So when do do we know when this came up? An opportunity?
March one.
Oh, so.
Right, so.
Yeah.
And June, May twelfth?
Yeah, I read that.
Yeah, and so this this is what I'm seeing.
Seventeenth, yeah.
And and if you read through it on one of the things you'll you'll hone in on is. You can't count on this to be like. Your fail safe to do your entire project, right? So if you were. Ready to go and you were working on something like say, maybe we were expanding and all of a sudden we needed to do some more HVAC or. Renovations to the restroom and it wasn't, we just our funding was not there. This is a golden opportunity. To add to the funds that we would already have to kick that through, right? And that's where you have to look at an opportunity like this grant for. Not, I just want to pay for the whole thing because it's just not realistic with this much money.
Right, yeah, it's too bad.
The emphasis on this one as well is the main deadline was. Increased accessibility had to be the argument.
Yeah.
Not just you want to make it cooler. Present a proposal to have. Show how you're removing barriers.
Yes, right.
Remove architectural barriers.
Yeah, and I even read some section in here on where, I mean, measurements where everything's gonna be, the size of your building and everything, how do you find out? We have not done any of that.
And you added the blueprints.
Correct.
Got everything.
Yeah. So I guess basically. My and Lori's position is great opportunity, maybe a good little, you know, tag, a little put a pin in it reminder that we really do need to make some plans. And come together.
Was there anything else on it then, Christina, or?
No, that was really my position on it, and I hope that that was gonna be received by you guys fine.
Yeah, I'm not going to. I mean, never written a grant myself. I can. Can't imagine having all that information trying to fish it out. Or trying to call people. Yeah, by the, well, first question and answer, yeah, closes March twenty-nine.
That's Friday. Even if I did start on March one, it would be, I mean, again.
That's still pushing.
We have no idea what we want to do.
Yep.
Right?
We haven't had a conversation with anybody else.
There's no quotes, there's no bids, there's no.
Then we can move on.
Okay. Okay. Um. So the rail bank conveyance property has. Had a couple of updates in the last two weeks. The city attorney and myself have discovered that there was a. There was a section of the rail bank. Owned by Mendat that was. Mislabeled in G I S as a Heinz Township. Um parcel. And I'm glad that Joe caught it. The. Long, the short story is there's no annexation needed. At this point, because it was already a Black Duck parcel to begin with, that just wasn't labeled in G I S and at the tax division correctly. So when the when the state conveyed the property to the city. To get ready to give it to the co-op, they created another parcel. Away from the full parcel that the rail bank. Number represents. And that one unfortunately was mislabeled as well because that mistake was never caught. So. If you follow anything in G I S with Beltrami County. When you have something that is controlled by the state, like the railway, like the railroad. If you follow it throughout the the different local governments. It should start and stop and be renumbered based upon the jurisdiction it goes into. So if you follow it down seventy-one. It originally went all the way down to Heinz, the Heinz Road. And then it changed to a ten-strike address, a ten-strike parcel ID. It would get past ten-strike and it would change to like a port hole one. But when you came north. From Heinz all the way to the middle of where the trestle is.
Wow.
It was an eighteen, which is a Heinz Township prefects for parcel ID. Once you got. Middle of the trestle to the northeast side, north of the boundary of Black Duck, it was an eighty-one, which is a Black Duck parcel ID. And in all fairness, that whole entire boundary of where Black Duck is, it should have been eighty-one. So it was misnumbered at the tax division at the county. So they they updated that in the last week.
So one transpose number.
I don't even think it was a transpose number. It's been like this since the nineties when everything was loaded into G I S. So they had to consult. The tax division, the county recorder and G I S all had to come together in order to formulate this correction. So. When. The conveyance happened to the city in December. That's new parcel, like I said, that the co-op's gonna take over, just. Unfortunately, became an eighteen instead of an eighty-one because it was within that boundary of. When it was an eighteen. So what I submitted to you guys is the letter of correction from the county. I've also provided this to the co-op and then a couple of maps just showing. How it's been corrected. So we should we should not have to do any annexation. My plan, as long as everything works with all the parties, is to have the purchase agreement and the resolution. Prepared by the. Attorney for this council to approve on the April eighth meeting. So that the conveyance can complete. And I've extended that information to Rachel at Co-op as well.
So I have one question.
Certainly.
So. Where it shows red on the computer here? So this is the whole.
That's the rail bank, yep.
So this is what we acquired?
Nope.
So. Or?
No, what we acquired would then the second part, the second document I gave you. So go to. That one. The O one. And that's a zoom in and it's the blue. So those. Those are the two, the two sections done.
All right.
But it encompasses all of the trestle. It's just, these are the two that got pulled up, the sections of land, I should say, that got pulled out to become a new party. If that. Is a little clearer.
So so the city of Black Duck owns the whole trestle. Line now?
No, the city of Black Duck does not own the trestle. The state still does.
Okay, so.
The only thing that got conveyed is in that second map.
Just that, just that much?
Correct.
Okay, so the state still owns all that rest of it?
Yes.
All the way over to?
Forever.
I mean.
Yeah, they own the whole thing.
Okay. That's why, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, what you saw in the red was just what the rail bank contain is contained inside our municipal boundary.
All right, that's what I want.
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
All right, great.
Any questions on that?
We're gonna get it done so they can get started.
Um, I don't have any movement on the sex, so.
Yes.
No, since we've been in the emails.
Still waiting on a couple of numbers before I approach the family again.
For Eve?
Yes. My understanding is now this the. We kept this, this is a. Private project and was presented to the city, right?
Right.
That we are not involved with and we essentially approved. We were gonna, yes, we're giving the. The land.
Yeah.
The the area to put the stage.
Permission.
Yeah, and we're not.
We're not transferring ownership of the land.
It's got permission of bill.
With permission to bill.
Right.
But the. This is not something that we're managing and handling.
No, this is something I'm kind of doing on my own, just keeping everybody else.
Well, I understand runs lined up questioning. It will remain a structure on a city piece of property and will remain an operating maintenance.
It'll be ours.
Burden, if you will, when when it is done.
Right, but I mean, as far as getting it done, it's something we're just consenting to. Correct.
That would be correct.
You know, I know funding is an issue. I guess my suggestion is if we were gonna be involved in that, that's for sure. Would it be wise to have our grant specialist at Witsa to drink into that?
Uh, I can make a phone call to Gail.
Yeah, but I don't know whether I want to do that.
Can I pop in for a second?
More.
I think it might.
We're we're trying to step completely to the side of this and and not be in it. So I would. Not be in favor of doing anything like that.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we've.
I'm wondering if we're involved.
We've been going through it for two years now. And it's it's time, what we've done, I guess, in the last. Month since last meeting or so is kind of try to. Really move this along so it's not in the hard court anymore. Yep.
Keep it with the private citizens that are proposing.
Correct.
As a memorial to their family.
Yes, sir.
That's where it depends on.
Clarification.
Now, let the city call.
Okay. So funding options. I do have a funding option. It's through USDA via Beltrami Electric. To clarify, Beltrami Electric would be the. Would be the entity that the city would be borrowing the money from, okay? What Beltrami Electric Cooperative is attempting to do by. Processing. This through USDA. Is because they're a utility, they have the. Ability to start a revolving loan fund. And this would be their first. Option or first attempt at doing so. I have met with Jared Actonoff and partners and Gail from Witsa. Uh, regarding this program and they're very interested in being. Using our project with City Hall as the stepping stone to create the revolving loan fund. The beauty in being their first project is they do most of the USDA paperwork. We become the borrower. They get the money from USDA and then we borrow it from them at zero percent for ten years. Once we are the first entity that's getting money loaned to them. There, all of the notes receivable funding that goes back to Beltrami Electric. Feeds their revolving loan fund program, which is basically what our city has.
What we do.
Mm-hmm, yep, but they've never been able to fund a project yet. In order to start it, there are other utility. Entities within the state that have done this. And they really want to start this program and they're interested in being our financier.
And. Forgive me for being the. The greedy one here. Well, what do they benefit?
They benefit of having that revolving loan fund program.
Good.
Yep. Because it, the notes receivable goes back into the fund and they can use it for all kinds of things, just like we do.
So then they would have like a, as we do, an unrestricted portion of it.
Most likely, yes. They'll have to have their own set of bylaws and and policies. Yep. Yep, governing it. But USDA provides this economic development option to them. Now, this is no grant. This is all loaned.
Yeah.
This is the best deal I can get because our Public Works Public Safety Facility capped off our capital improvement project. On. Way of building or, you know. Creating new facilities. We can't do that type of funding anymore. We're we've tapped it out basically. Um. And because we're not building something, we're renovating something, that also is a difficult resource to find funding for. I've had people say, well, why don't you just tear this building down and build a new one? Well, we wouldn't get more capital improvement. Project name because we've already used everything we can for the new facility. So.
Don't suppose it has any historical value?
It would already have to be on the historical registry in order to get any funding for it.
Workshop. If I take thirty-seven bill. If the other, the old building was here, it would have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Ali Ali Jamtoss decided to demolish it and build this plain. Unornate one.
I am. Jared's very anxious and he definitely wants to get started on this and. With this being our, pretty much our only option. They're definitely. You know. They're definitely interested and I would really like to move forward. I, he asked me for a timeline. I said, well. It couldn't happen until like twenty-six, as much as I'd like it to do in twenty-five. Because this is the paperwork's gonna take. Six months, six to eight months to even get started for them. So, yeah. Well, you know, USDA didn't.
No, I.
Go very fast.
I understand.
The other facility.
Speed stuff up just out of government.
Right, I guess. One of my biggest, one of my biggest things that I need feedback from this council is. Ten years. Zero percent. Two hundred thousand dollar project that's gonna be twenty grand a year for ten years.
The two hundred thousand is like.
There's, I have estimates, yes. I have estimates from the roper, the plumber, the. The electrician. Yeah, and actually, that was another part of the reason why Beltrami Electric is very interested. It is because. Part of the, part of the project is to rewire, update the heating source in the building of which they provide the utility for. So. They're willing to put in some more grant dollars towards the project to lower the costs to put in the stuffless heaters in the building. Instead of using the baseboard heating that's higher energy output.
What about with the basement?
Uh, that is also included in the project. The water intrusion.
Plumbing.
The plumbing and the water and she, yes.
So then we would be, would you be able to use said basement? Or?
We should not be able to use said basement because this building is not ADA. I mean, technically, we can't do anything for the public in the lower level unless we. Provide them an access that is disability allowed, you know? I don't have an elevator in here, so I. I I'm pretty sure we have not been able to use that that lower level for.
Give me those numbers one more time.
And that, oh, the ten-year note is zero percent for ten years. And that like two hundred thousand add ten percent for contingencies. So. My guess it's gonna be somewhere like two twenty-five because some of my estimates are two years old now. So twenty grand a year. For ten years. Is a rough estimate right now.
Yeah.
It's not gonna get cheaper than that.
It it's not gonna be.
Sorry.
No one worries absolutely.
It's not.
She's right, man. It's also.
And you may never come across this kind of grant again, you know, I mean, you may, but. By that time, the two hundred thousand would be four three thousand. Everything's gonna go up. I mean, when we started first looking at square footage costs for the new public facility, I think we were at. Two seventy-five a square foot. And it, you know, it went crazy by the time we started bidding. But that was the other thing. I'm gonna have to bid for this project because it exceeds the threshold that. You can do as an individual. It has to be one cohesive project.
So. The problem we're gonna run into is just like the. Public Works Building, if this is two thousand twenty-fourth, you just start filling the bids out there now or your bids you already have. There for now.
There for you.
And if you're not gonna do the project until two thousand twenty-six. You're gonna have to add. Twenty-five, thirty percent more per bid. Because the price is up, everything's gonna be going up. Like, oh, you're right. Well, well, you know, we're, look what happened over there.
Yep, yep.
Because all the paperwork and all the stuff that put us way behind on that building. And the cost, well, then COVID, you know, in the middle of COVID, it would cost more. So that two hundred grand probably gonna be. Two fifty, two seventy-five.
I have not put. Paper to pencil and pencil the paper yet on. Planning out where our bond and our debt schedule is to twenty-five and twenty-six yet, which I would want to do regardless. Um, because now that I have the debt schedule for the new facility, I can get a better opportunity, a better eye of where that is, but. The.
I know.
Called the nine bond sunsets, but I'm pretty sure we planned on some of that being that. Cover for the new facility too.
I I mean, so what are your, what are your other options when you, when you start looking at at the whole project there? The whole idea is here. You you got what? Build a new city hall? Or repair this one? Move across the street? We we just had those. Those looked at both of them. Do you, do you? You know, do you tear it down and try to put something on the same footprint?
He's still on the old crappy basement.
Might could be gotten rid of, but.
Is there a way to, there is no way to spread this out over. No, we just had it over the way ten years. Ten years, so either way, even if you do a project in here for ten years.
So and.
You're gonna, you're running into the same.
And.
You can't do a project.
Right.
On some of the stuff, electrical and the heating.
Oh, has to really gather.
Yeah, you know, you're.
You're gonna kick this can down the road for the next. Council.
And to be honest with you, I mean, we're sitting in this position with a lot of things because nothing's done.
Yeah, or we have another building sitting here just like those two. Or like the three of them.
That it tore down, right, because things weren't.
Because things couldn't be done, that's. I think we should pursue it. We need a new roof, so, yeah, there's no way to delay making a decision.
Yeah.
Yes, if we, I mean, if you don't fix it, we, out of the holler, well, you're gonna sell it. If you wanted to. I mean, if you don't fix it, we, out of the holler, well, you're gonna sell it. If you wanted to go somewhere else. If at the end of the ten year period, there's, there's no more money, we may, we may have to cut something. Obviously, we're gonna do things in order, in order to sell something. The first thing is a roof, because once your building leaks. Two, three years and you're done.
I gotta, I gotta admire Security USA, their insurance. I mean, they've got a pretty old building over there too. And and they're putting some dime in there right now to get that thing.
Their building is approximately the same vintage as this, because this opened in, this new structure here opened in nineteen fifty seven. That used to be Beltrami Electric, it's been owned and operated. Used to go in there to pay your bill. And that was here in the early sixty, about sixty year. In around the fifties, the same bricks, almost. I think they just shared the brick pile. So I think we should move forward and the first thing we should do is the roof. That leaves the rest of the project. No, I don't know, you should, is it first on my list is spend the whole. Quarter of a million, third of a million dollars on this.
Half full kind of person. I mean, we've, we've, we've put money into just about every facility we own. Try to improve what we can to make, you know, long term commitments. We need to do it to do it to everything. There's things we need to do to the cemetery. We've had that conversation. You know, worked on, on the public works and that was absolutely needed and keep having new equipment sit outside, so. Unless we, you know, vacate this place and move City Hall into. The police department side of the facility, I don't know if you understand sort of.
Well, Christina, can you hear me? How's it going tonight? Well, now, one thing I could suggest is, you know, our architectural group for other communities have done uh facility assessments. You know, there's obviously a little cost associated with that, but what it would do is it would look at your existing facility. And not only address the things that we're talking about, you know, with the improvements that Gail's trying to get money for, but. It would assess your heating, electrical and other things. And it would put into perspective for you, are you, is it more cost effective to try to improve what you have? Or look at relocating, because I agree with everything that was said is, you know, a new building, you're probably talking three hundred dollars a square foot. And I agree that, you know, if you're looking at fixing your existing facility. A couple of years down the road, you better add at least thirty percent to that budget, because I've seen that on project after project where. When we get held up with getting projects approved, by the time we get a bid, it's really gone up quite a bit.
And and to that point, that is one of the, um, that's one of the pieces of this puzzle to. Um, a feasibility or some type of whole, you know, project plan is gonna have to be put in place.
Yep. So just throwing that out there, if that's something you wanna consider.
As USDA required it for the Public Works Facility, they'll require it through this way as well. We'll still be going through the same steps we went through USDA. We'll just be providing it to Beltrami Electric, because they'll be the douchery.
We used to have you sitting in front of me, Tim, and then I, you know, all of a sudden I forget you're there, but you know, you're there.
Yeah, sorry about that.
You wanna take the snowmobile tonight?
Well, it could have.
Well, that, you know, that's a, another point, usability.
Was something we need that, we need to look at in depth, I mean. See your best option. I mean, I like this. The loan part of it, there, you know. Because you know, when you spread it over ten years, it doesn't seem like twenty thousand dollars, it doesn't seem like a lot, but.
Well, the last couple of meetings we made these conversations, everybody's. I just said we need to take care of the building, so I continued on. I'm looking for resources. I found a resource. I guess I need some direction. I'm not asking for you guys to approve a loan right now, but I'm, I'm not going to waste Beltrami Electric's. Resources. If the council's not ready to move forward with this project. Yeah.
What's your building, what mold, it's about, it's gonna be moved up, it's gonna be building the process free. We'll have three corners of the main intersection of the town, decaying buildings.
I heard a really cute comment the other day, a, a older guy came in with his son. And when I say older, I mean older than me. And his son said, I think I was five years old when I was in that office with. Did it when you were getting a loan for your new car, dad? It was cute. And he hadn't stepped foot in here since then. Thank you. Well, I will continue to work with our partners at Beltrami Electric and Gail. Um, on the sides that we need to, and I will start taking a deeper dive and. Um, and I, and I, and I do believe I told Jared twenty six. So that gave us a decent, that gave us some room.
Next word session, if we know what our. What the debt schedule.
Yeah, I, yes, then that's, that's what I was trying to say is I'll, I'll look at the debt schedule, I'll took. If I have the time, we'll try to go to twenty eight. Don't have a whole lot more to give you guys except the um. The communication services that Witsap provided and this tax proposal. Um, I got from Pinnacle since the last meeting is just an informational at this point. Um, I did tell everybody at the last meeting that. The marketing is going to hinge. Predominantly on what the ballot is gonna read. And how that's going to look and what we're gonna be able to do from that, and I'm still working on that language, so. Tim has provided some really good um information, what Witsap's been able to do for previous referendums. And the costs estimates that Pinnacle's done for video and social media and paper. Print are really reasonable, so I think we'll have some options to consider the summer before we start kicking it off. Maybe by May, I'll be able to provide you guys with um. A solid estimate of costs for the um marketing.
My understanding is our target audience is just the registered voters within the city limits of Blackberry.
That is correct.
And that's approximately three hundred and fifty?
Um, at my lap, at the presidential primary, I had three hundred ninety six eligible voters registered. Um, but that was based on the previous, well, actually, I shouldn't say that, that was based off of the twenty. Three election that Beltrami Elect, or Beltrami County did for their referendum, so that was the last time I had registered voters.
So we just have to keep in mind that if that's four hundred, say, when you do a mailing. Might have. Two hundred and seventy five mailers, because a lot of those registered voters live at the same address, because they're Mr. and Mrs.
Correct.
We're not gonna be sending. Two mailings to every house.
And and, yeah, you're right, and so the costs I don't think are gonna be astronomical.
We definitely have a separate website page.
Correct, we'll use our YouTube channel.
It's a very targeting audience and spending about tens of thousands of dollars.
No, I, I don't even, I don't even think it's gonna be. My, the number in my head is like fifteen to two thousand dollars. And that's, that's mailing and everything, so. I just have to keep in mind that what gets sent out can't. You can't tell a person how to vote, right? You can just give them the information and let them make the correct decision. Or the decision they want to make. So. We have to hear the language the correct way, and that's why I focus it on the ballot language.
I guess we do need to be careful how we word things. Not wanting to uh. The recycling bins, forgot about that.
Mike, do you have any updates on the recycling?
Uh, I don't have anything. I talked to Brian quick via email today and I haven't got a response back yet, so. Hopefully by the uh council meeting, we'll have some kind of more concrete stuff for you.
They're talking about doing that more places next year.
They tried to court hope and got ran right out. Is there a reason why, Mike? Or do you know the reason why? Local residents, basically. That area there is, well, it's actually the road that I live on down there. There's a lot of young families and a lot of kids on the road and the increased traffic in that area was kind of the big. Full pot for that area, whereas here, it's really not gonna be anything different. In fact, having the contact here. Will probably keep our stuff cleaner than what it's been. That's my hope, especially with some screening around it, I think. I think for here, it's a good. But hopefully, like you said, by the next council meeting, I'll have something more for you guys, like. With that one kind of being cut down and some other stuff not going real well, I would guess that they'd be more than happy to. You know, put up the screening for us and maybe go the extra mile up here to make this work out. Why don't you do business?
Uh, you son of I.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I, yeah, I. Certain I put this on the final. Okay, good.
I have both of them open. I was on the wrong one. There we go. The punch list. My favorite word. Yeah, without the, the punch list in front of me. Um, what I can tell you is the, the valve has been fixed. You have the pressure valve that was taken care of. The overhead door, obviously, we need some warmer weather. Same with the windows, they're wanting to kind of spray them down. With the garden hose essentially to try to track exactly where it is they're leaking from, so. We need a little bit nicer weather than what we've got right now for that. Uh, the boilers kind of seem to come and go with whether they're working right or not, so there's still a little bit of an issue there. Uh, what else you got here? Uh, the bubbling of the FRP, I don't really know where we stand on that. I think it's just kind of a. Wait a little bit longer and see what it does when the weather starts to warm up the other ways. If it moves more or doesn't move. It's definitely an issue. And the exterior lights haven't been looked at yet either. That's where we are there. There are certain timeframe, you're hoping to have it. Honestly, I mean, nothing's gonna be able to really be wrapped up until we're. You know, consistently in probably the forties, so I mean, you're looking at May, yeah, that was kind of, I think, our. Our timeline was hope to have this all knocked out by the end of May, basically. Which I don't see being a problem. Now we can go to new business.
Uh, Mr. Eggers uh asked to join us today. I did not have a contact. Phone or email for him to invite him on Zoom, so I will try to figure out how to reach out to him unless. You have a contact?
I may have, and if we want.
I mean, I, I invited him to the April eighth meeting. I think he was gonna come to this one because he had a conflict with April eighth. At another city.
And and was he, what he normally asked for is the proclamation.
Correct.
That we all stand on the same ground, which. And I would have no problem with him doing that. Doing another proclamation.
Yeah, if he doesn't, if, if he doesn't, can't come on April eighth, I can invite him. Weather hasn't really been the most travel, travel and blah, blah, blah.
Tony Claire's. From the HRDC.
Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity. I apologize uh. For not being in person. I appreciate the opportunity presented to the council today. Uh, I'm also probably a little bit glad I'm doing this remote. I've got a chest cold that. I don't wanna share with any of you, so me being in my own office makes it much more beneficial, so I apologize for sounding like a frog. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen here. One of the things.
Do you have ability to do that?
Nope, I don't, sorry.
That's okay, let me see if I can give you permission here.
We have your power point.
I did give them, yeah.
Okay, well, we can roll through it. I don't need to share a screen, that'll work perfect. So, one of the things that I, I've been at HRDC now for about two and a half years and I primarily work on. Uh, transportation and active living planning. Um, I apologize and I think our office can do a better job of supporting the work that this council is doing. Um, but at the same time, I wanted to make sure I had something that was beneficial to you before I approached the council. Um, so today I just wanna give a quick. Five minute overview on Headwaters Regional Development Commission. Um, and then at the end, I'll give you a, a funding opportunity that might be of assistance to some of the things, maybe potentially that you were talking about today. So a little bit about HRDC, we do cover a five county region, Beltrami covered, Clearwater Hubbard, Lake of the Woods. Emanoban, um, there's a lot of miles within our. Region, um, not necessarily always the most populated. We do also have three tribal nations with Red Lake, White Earth and Leech Lake. As a staff, we really try to do our best to make sure we've got touch points in every one of our communities. Um, and part of our commission you'll see is representative that with county and city officials. Um, I believe in the past, this council has. Um, put forward a representative to represent Beltrami small cities and I, right now, I believe. Nick is still holds that seat, and if you have interest, we'd love to have you come and, and join our meetings. They're the third Thursday of every month. Uh, a little bit about us is HRDC exists to help improve the lives of citizens in the Headwaters region. Uh, it accomplishes this by creating relationships with customers uh across various areas. To help address some of the most critical issues. So we have a number of projects. Uh, as I had mentioned, I primarily work in active living, health and wellbeing programs. Things that would come to mind are, you guys have that wonderful trail going along seventy one. Um, there's funding opportunities that could potentially extend or, or branch that multi-use trail and run that over to. Uh, the new beach or the golf course area. One of the keys to that is having a good plan in place and, and doing, going through some of the planning. Um, that happens on the. One of the keys to that is having a good plan in place and, and doing, going through some of the planning, um, that happens on the front end of that. We also do a lot of housing and business lending, uh, strategic planning, grant writing. Um, transportation and housing planning work, public engagement, um, and facilitation is something that our office is really strong in. Uh, community action planning, I think would be something we've done. Uh, we just completed one up in Badet. Uh, and I think that would be something that we could bring to this council that might be a benefit. Uh, we do some placemaking activities, which is. When you start to look in, in the Bemidji area, we've done placemaking on the Ridgeway. Uh, campus where there's the low-income housing developments and we also are starting that also. In the Conifer complex where there's three different housing units over there. Uh, looking into the future, we see a lot of dollars coming into the region. Around sustainability, so we're starting to take a bigger uh. Move forward into environmental sustainability and that can look a lot of different ways from solar-ready housing. Um, potentially. Uh, electric charging stations, and I know that's a push in a lot of our communities. Uh, but it's out there and so if it's of interest to this council, we can help assist with that. We do do some work now with local food initiatives. We have one person on staff that does. Uh, our food hub and that's trying to, to connect. Our farmers and our producers with avenues to keep the things that they're producing local. Uh, I know Black Duck, you guys have a, a farmer's market that's pretty active and I think that we could provide some assistance and, and support there as well. So when we start talking about our values, we exist to help our communities and the region as a whole be successful. This is a core mission and it's a core of everything we do. Um, we take our work really serious here in the office, but we try to have a little fun along the way and I think. Uh, if you look at the first page of the slide with the photos, you know, we were up in Badet and I, I'm a big walleye fisherman and I thought it was. Really pertinent that I hold the biggest walleye and I had the person take the picture, so it looked like I was holding that walleye. Um, you know, we have, right now, our staff is thirteen people. And it ranges from people that are versed in housing, there's people that are versed in RLF loan uh, work. I know that Sean. Currently oversees the revolving loan fund for HRDC and has that with, I believe that Black Duck has a contract, uh, and we provide RLF. Support for you. Um, Brooke Jenkins, she just started with HRDC. Uh, she's got a couple of really neat housing programs for first-time homebuyers. Like, if your parents have never owned a home, you can be eligible for up to, I believe it's thirty thousand dollars in first-time homebuyer credit, trying to. Entice and enable some of the people that previously would have had barriers to homeownership to, to having access to that. Uh, Tammy Hagan is our mobility manager, working on providing enhancing transportation options for everybody. We're fortunate in our five-county region to have a number of public transit uh, organizations within it. However. There's a lot of miles between where Pub Onion Transit stops and where Red Lake Transit starts, and so how do we bridge those gaps and how do we provide transportation for those people? Uh, so Tammy does a wonderful job, uh, trying to bridge some of those. Building out volunteer driver programs and that's something that we've just relaunched our regional transportation coordination council. Um, we just hired Dan Anderson, he's with, he was previously with uh. First National Bank in Bemidji, so he's well-educated and he's leading our economic development work. Um, we're here to support you. Um, but the biggest thing I think for me was even just sitting in the meeting today is knowing where your. Barriers are, where you're, you're, you're being hung up or where you could use support. Um, and I think that brings me to the next opportunity, which is the Blandon Foundation Grant. Um, this is a neat opportunity. Blandon is a great funder. Um, they changed their funding opportunity of what their grant is, is looking towards. And right now they've refocused it to small communities and rural placemaking. Uh, there's a few different things that you can do with it and a couple of the things that jumped out to me was. You know, if this council has a comprehensive plan that could use some updating, you can apply for funds to move that forward. Um, engaging community planning process that includes creating newer uh, indoor/outdoor public spaces. When Christina, when you guys, when the council was talking today about the library, one of the things that came to mind is. You, you have an interest and you have funds, but you, you, you need some additional planning. This could be a great opportunity for this council to move forward and submit an application to get dollars to, to start that planning process. Um. The turnaround on this, I found out about it on March thirteenth. And the LOI deadline for this is March twenty-nine, so it's a quick turnaround. However, the LOI is uh. It's a pretty straightforward question and answer. Um, I think the council, I, I'd be happy to help if there was a project that this council wanted to move forward and apply. One of the keys is you would need to have a project total cost of what you would be asking for. And the funding for this is anywhere from twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand. And there's no match required. It's designed for small communities of less than five thousand, and I think it's a great opportunity. Uh, for Black Duck to maybe take a run at a project that, you know. Is in your vision, but you, you need some funding help to make it happen and this could be a, a great opportunity for that. I know. Um, in conversations I've had brief with Max and, and with Christina, um. The Black Duck Ducks Rest Restoration, that would have been a wonderful project. Uh, and it still could be if that was the way the council wanted to go, that you could potentially apply. To have those funds to support that restoration project.
Hey, Tony?
Yes.
Have you helped the community through this process before?
The LOI portion?
Well, this particular blended one, because I applied and got this two years ago.
So, I, when I was on the phone the other day with another um, entity. The LOI or the letter of inquiry was really your basic mailing address, uh. Identification number, what the project cost was, pretty straightforward and there wasn't a lot of text or narrative needed. I think there was two questions that could put maybe a hundred or two hundred-word max in. I think this could get put together in probably. An hour tops.
I, I just need to make myself a little more clear. I guess my, my reason for asking the question is. Do you know if Blandon's going to give this out to the same entity that already got it most recently? Because we received twenty-five thousand dollars to offset our demolition project next door in twenty-two.
I, I don't think, I wouldn't, I wouldn't let that hold you back now that they've re-sculpted what their, their focus is for their funding. And their grant amounts, I think, um. Submitting an LOI, I, I think it's a great opportunity for a small investment of time. Uh, and I'm happy to help with that process if there's a project that the council has that would potentially have a dollar figure or a shovel-ready project.
Yeah.
Is there, is there's any questions for me too or about the HRDC? Our biggest thing is we're here to help, um. Uh, you have my contact information. My cell phone's on there. We really want to be an asset to this council to provide some of the resources and the more we know. About what you're working on or where you're headed. The better we can support the work that you're doing. There's a lot of funding opportunities that come across our desk on a weekly basis. Um, and trying to get those out is super important and it makes it a lot easier if we have a, a really good idea. What projects the council is, is, is working towards and that's on me for not being at some of these meetings earlier on in my career here.
Well, I appreciate that, Tony. Um. Boy, I, I mean, it kind of puts it into perspective when you say, what are you, what are your goals? What, where do you guys, what do you see? You know, like the duck, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have that one. Refinished also, you know, and what about the path, those tarred. Yeah, the blacktop pieces that we're walking on down there that are a nightmare, the uh. Or, or something.
Expanding and even that.
Or, or expanding something like that, or the. Uh, repairing the bike path in some of its spots, I don't know, where. I, yeah, would it be great to have, be able to, for the people to ride their bikes right out from. Right, right from town, right out to the beach to, you know, where you're not riding on the road or worried about. You know, getting hit by a car, that kind of thing. Yeah, I think it's great, I think, but. You know, where do you want it? How do you, I guess I'm, I'm asking, how do we start, how do we start tackling something that size?
You, you know, I think one of the things in here that is fundable. Um, could be a comprehensive plan and I think that's something. That if the council was interested in that would lay out kind of a direction and a map and set goals for the, the council. Um, could be an option as well to it. You know, I think the other part of it is. Probably me coming up and, and having lunch with you and, and let's just talking, because there's. You know, when you talk about the path needing to be repaved, there's carbon reduction dollars. Um, in the, in the district in ATP two through Mendat that, that would be eligible for as well too. That would come with a match.
Well, I was going to suggest that too, that maybe at some point Christina, you and Mike and I could get together and uh. Meet Tony's and start talking about these, you know, the funding opportunities and what the uh, goals of the city are.
I would be open to that.
Mike's on board. Even if he wasn't on board, he's on board now.
Planning is always really, is, is always a good point and when you finish one project, you're not necessarily done.
No, and.
Even though you want to be.
We're never done.
Well, I, I, I will echo too, I, it was said earlier that what's the best way to slow a project down and that's.
Uh, government.
We have government, and, and I see that a little bit too, you know, we, we do a lot of state for us, the school planning. And it's a planning process and then once you get through that, then you're eligible for some other funding. Um. But it takes time and so you need to be in it kind of for the long haul and nothing happens very. Very fast. In my previous career, I was in sales and you could. Close a sale and high-five and go to the next one and that's just not how planning work goes. You. It's, you're in for the long game and, and so it, it's been really enjoyable for me to, to kind of. Reset and refocus and, and then have to take a different approach to some of this stuff.
We, we were just talking about it before the meeting started, that this was the longest. Run that a council has had. And that's only been. Uh, forty, is it five years now? Four, four.
Three, four, so.
We're in the three to four range.
Yeah.
And. When you're having a whole lot of turnover in these positions.
You can't have.
Every, everybody, you know, comes in with a different idea or it, ideas leave and. It, it's tough to do something. But I think now, I mean, we do have a fairly cohesive group and I think you could. We could make some plans. We could get something done.
And, and I'll throw out a shameless plug too, just for HRDC. I know that our commission meetings, um. They're not overly intrusive if there's the interest from this council. Um. We'd love to have someone from this group sit in and, and. Join us. We, we do have a Zoom option for all of our meetings. Um, I did talk to Cal, the, the chair and. He's open to, to getting, trying to get the commission back to where we got, or we have. Twenty meet, people at these meetings. I think right now we're at about four, fifteen or sixteen. Commission members at our meetings, um, and we tried to do a good job of bringing new opportunities of what's coming down the pipe. Um, and I think. When we start looking at this sustainability and clean energy stuff, I think there's going to be a lot of different opportunities for the greater Minnesota area. Just a matter of making sure we're going after the right things and I think that's where being really. In tune with the, the different councils across the region is going to be really important.
Uh, thank you for, for being here this evening. They're available to us this evening.
I appreciate the opportunity. Like I said, feel free to reach out to me. Any questions or if you want additional information? Let me know and I'd happy, if I don't have the answer, I'll get you to the right person within our office to get you the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Next up.
I'm sure, I, I had a visit from an old friend. Couple weeks ago, um, Dan Posner. Uh, has a real, um, an insurance company, North West Partners down in Bemidji and. Uh, he used to carry our liquor liability back in. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. And uh, we moved from having his company cover a liquor liability to the current one, ill and casualty because. The coverage was better, the service was goo- was just as good and it was less money for the city. And even Dan at that time said, nope, you gotta go. This is, this is better for the city. But that never stopped my relationship with Dan. Um, he's a good friend of mine, but also he's got a golden opportunity now he's. Um, with this company, Northwood Partners and they actually cover a lot of cities in the state of Minnesota. Including, um, they help the lead Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. So I had a meeting with them and his partner. To see, um, if there's any interest with the city from. Moving our insurance carrier from the insurance, the league of Minnesota cities to them. Um. Yep, it's a big, it would be a big jump. Um, they have, they, they have just as great of coverage as the league does. Um, there's a lot of small cities that, um, they cover and. We're actually in conversations right now with, um, city of Bemidji to have them potentially become a carrier that they cover. Lots of large businesses and small businesses in the Bemidji and the Beltrami County area. And, um, I wanted to give them an opportunity. Obviously, to me, it's, it's, it boils down to money. Because I can pretty much work with everybody, anybody. Right now, our agency that works. Um, through the League of Minnesota Cities is Security USA. Um, I've been working with Terry Mann and before that it was Jim Walden. Um, and that relationship's been great. So, um, regardless of those relationships, um, obviously. This council's seen our workers' comp go up over the last three, four years considerably. On our property and uh, casualty. And liability insurance has increased too, but we've also, you know, changed a lot of our facilities that we own, our autos that we own. So, in the conclusion, I provided to North West Partners. Um, what I would provide to the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. Uh, our wages for twenty-four to see if they can come under or within a decent amount of. A dollar amount, what our work comp is covered with, um, the league. And I spoke with Tony, he's Dan's partner and. Because of our loss runs right now in the last few years on just workers' comp, um. They're, they're recommending we stay with the league in Minnesota cities at this time. Um, they're still looking at, uh, what property and casualty might be, but. We kind of ended our conversation last week with. There's a lot of companies out there that would love to, um, bid for insurance on cities. And, uh, you know, we've been through an RFP process with other, um. Things, our engineer, attorneys and such, this would be something that we should if we had an interest. In moving or trying out a different, um, carrier to do, that's the correct way to do it. I'm not suggesting that this council consider that because I think the League of Minnesota Cities has been a really good advocate for us. And, um. Like I said at the beginning, money's the bottom line. Like I said at the beginning, money's the bottom line for me. If if we can save money. And still have great insurance coverage, then yes. That's an opportunity for us to move because the relationships are built. With the entity we work with. As you. Work through claims and stuff.
Yeah, the problem with insurance is you don't know how good it is, so you need it.
Right. And and we, you know, we've, we've had some work comp claims in the last three years and they've, the league has been a great advocate for us on them. They did a remarkable job working with um, a staff member of Mike's last summer, and I think everything came out really well. And I I don't have any problems working with the league. I've never had any issues. I can call them at any time and get the answers I need. And the questions answered that I do. So I'm not recommending that the council look through an RFP process with this. Um, because of this at this time, but I wanted to share with you that because this is such a. A large chunk of our levy. That you know that. I I have had a visit and I have been, you know, asked to take a hard look at what the league does. It just, I don't know if right now is the right time because of our loss runs we have. But it could be in the future.
Everybody's insurance went up, you know, everybody's homeowner's property insurance. Vehicle insurance, I mean, everything. All the way, I mean, for everybody. I was gonna switch my homeowner's insurance. And my insurance lady had it all lined up and she called me back like two days later and said, we're not moving. Because they were gonna raise like five hundred dollars. You were, I'm locked, I locked in. Let's look at it another year.
Sure.
You know.
At this point, um, this is just informational. Even even Tony from Northwest Partners is. Basically said you, you know, you could go through the RFP process if you wanted to. But a- as much as I'd like to stay with a really close friend that I have a a history and a relationship with. I have a history and relationship working with Security USA, too. And Terry now is doing great, so I I mean, for me, I don't see. A benefit to move unless it's a cost savings to the city. Because both of those would give tremendous service to us. It just isn't the right way to just say, oh, yeah, if you're lower, I'll go with you. We'd have to go through an RFP process.
So as I understand that our insurance coverage now is with the Minnesota Cities and Illinois Casualty.
Illinois Casualty covers our TRAM, our local liability.
Okay.
We could get our liquor liability through. The LMCIT, but we haven't because they've traditionally been higher.
And with each of these coverages, there is an agent specified, which is currently security.
Sounds correct.
Would. Only change be when we change the agent to this entity?
Yes.
But and the coverages would still be with Ellen?
Nope.
Big Minnesota.
Well.
Coverages would change.
The coverages would change, too. Yeah. Um, they have, and I gotta remember what the name is of the company. They have a full team. That's in the state of Minnesota that Dan um, Posner actually works with. He's the only one in Vamiji. That's local. Everybody else is um, throughout the state. There is. There's one company that bids the work comp run, and that's what I'm trying to find in that. I don't know if it's in here. It's not. It's one company that they work with that would do our bid for our work comp. And I'm sorry, but I just cannot get the name out of my, into my head yet.
The underlying companies would could or would change as well.
Yes. Yeah.
Possibly more.
Possibly, yes.
Yeah, if we're gonna, you know, rethink the insurance coverage, I think we should do that, you know, logically, independent of a. PowerPoint presentation.
And a and a visit that just included me.
Yeah.
I completely agree.
With with.
Yeah.
We we didn't go out.
Nope.
For RFPs on engineering, just because we, you know, somebody else sent some. So I think we we need to think through that in the council. Probably at a different time of the year when we wanna.
If we do.
Redo coverages if we're dissatisfied.
Yeah. I mean, the amount of time we spent on the monas- the amount of time and energy you spend on our RFP process, you really need to have. You're really looking for a goal and.
And there has to be an.
Yeah.
Dissatisfied.
And this one, because we already have our loss runs. Um, documented through the League of Minnesota Cities. Any insurance carrier that goes through an RFP process is going to look at those before they quote us at all, so. Regardless of, like you said, what the service would be from that ag- that agency. Um, and what they can do for us. The the end numbers are still gonna be there.
Yes, I mean, if there's a dissatisfaction with the current setup, I have heard.
Yeah. I have, I have none. I mean, we had two street light issues last winter. Remember those? And they handled them.
I assume that the folks are okay because they're actually office in our building or if they move back.
Nope, they're still here.
Right over there.
And those folks are just doing, they're just, they just do auto. As far as I know, but yeah, because Terry is down in.
Well, they're homeless, too.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. Yeah, no, I I honestly, I don't have any problems. I mean, I I received a. I received a work comp letter that was sent by mistake. A couple of weeks ago and it was revol- were. In relation to a closed um, last run and I called the. The gal that I was working with and I said, why do I have this? And she said, nope, that was just kicked out by mistake, and that's the first thing. That I could ever honestly say in ten years I've had a confusion about. And that was just a kicked out letter. So if I ever come to you guys and say I need an RFP process for that. I will let you know, but right now I'm not gonna do, I I don't think you need to.
Thanks for letting us know. However.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not gonna start looking for things without you guys' involvement. So, item D has been kind of a hot button topic in the area the last. And fourteen days. Um, I don't know how much this council has been following it, but I wanted to provide. Some basic information about the bills that are in the Senate and the House right now regarding. Red Lake and the Red Lake State Forest Transfer. So that you can educate yourself on. What that could mean. And I'm not just talking red light, I'm talking the county, I'm talking. Our city because it can change what kind of revenue could potentially come to the town. We we cater to a lot of. Folks that go to Red Lake. You know, we have a lot of businesses that do a lot of. Service to folks that are Fisher fishermen and this, this could change. A lot for our county if it ends up getting passed. But um, I've had a couple of people approach me to find out what the council's position is on this and. At the time, we haven't met, so my first reason for putting it on the agenda is just education. If this council wishes to go on the record formally, you can do that on April eighth and. I know that this uh, Max said earlier, the City of Kellier has done on the record signing a resolution against. This, these bills. And what it could do for the City of Kellier on the City of Washtus. But the other thing that. You can do in your position is you can also reach out to your legislators. You can reach out to the people that that penned the bill. However, they may not answer you because you're not from their area, which can also create an issue. But I wanted to start the dialogue so that if you didn't know what was going on, you could get informed. It was it. The article in the paper was very well done. It was. A good summary of the meeting that was at the town hall in Washtus. Are they from residents?
It's from the Upper Red Lake.
Association?
Yeah, and then I got some. Some friends of mine that have, you know, they're members of, and they try and.
Okay.
And they even kind of posting some stuff and sending me, you know, about it. You know, it's just like anything, you're gonna get the. Their side and, you know, it's like going to court, you know.
We're not trying to take this and we're not doing this, we're not doing this.
I read it all. I just kinda.
Sit in the middle?
Well, we can't, we can't do nothing about it. I mean, I I've already, I've already called the. Wrote a few that we mailed myself to St. Paul and. I called a few people, but.
Didn't know.
Yeah. It would, it would really hurt our economy.
Has the, definitely has the potential to, yes.
I mean, he, the economy is everybody north of here, or even even south of here. You know.
I guess my question to you as a, as a council then would be, do we wanna take an official position on this or do you want to remain?
I think we should. Because it's gonna affect the bottom line of the City of Black Duck. Personally, I mean, the, the story.
Yes.
And if we're gonna go for our. Our uh, half percent, you know, it's really gonna affect the sales tax. You know, if you need any of it. If, you know, that passes. You know, we're losing a lot of revenue. Oh, the more revenue we lose.
Something we wanna.
Just as a regular, yeah, person not even in the city of. Black Duck as a Beltrami County resident. It's gonna affect our tax base.
As well.
A hundred percent. It'll affect our school districts and everything. It'll affect my, your property values. Which will also affect your tax base. So, I mean, as a resident of the Beltrami County. I, I think, you know.
On a whole, I think that, but I I do wanna know where everyone stands. I am ready to to hear where everyone stands on the issue. I don't have a problem with listening. But I think as a city, a- as representatives of the City of Black Duck, we should. Oppose these. These two files, two bills. Well, I think we heard earlier, we have about four hundred registered voters, citizens, and we're representing those. We should do. Things that are solely in the benefit of both folks and the. That could be construed as the tax checks they have to write and the basis. When you get your Beltrami County Statement, there's very clear line about what partially goes likely. So I would think we will want to take a position that advocates. Voters, registered or unregistered?
I'll put something together.
Thank you.
Leave that, Laurie. I agree. Easy resolution.
It's not gonna be a tough one to write, and like I said, it's. Uh, and I think it, it's important. Uh, with that.
Well, one more thing on there in that. That was just that the county passed their ordinance. On their local sales and use tax. Um, I have sent copy of this to both of our entities, the liquor store and the Bell course, so they're prepared for it. Um, I just did some quick, quick crunching of numbers. Our current. Uh, sales tax in the city is seven point three seven five, adding. The county's percent uh, by face is gonna make us an even eight percent in town. Before hopefully our sales tax passes, but. Liquor and it, that, anything on liquor is an additional two and a half percent, so that brings. Anything you're paying for liquor to a ten and a half percent sales tax on top of. And then our THC beverages we sell in our liquor store have an additional ten percent. On top of that, that's how much people pay. So if you were going to buy a four pack of THC beverages, you'd be paying. Twenty point five percent in sales tax on top of your purchase. Because it's THC or just. Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, that's, that's, that's regulated by state. Okay, yep.
So you go, what did you say, seven point three seven?
Right now, our sales tax is seven point three seven five. You add the county on there, which that already includes their half percent per streets. For the county. Um, you add the new one for the jail and our sales tax will be ten percent. And that takes effect July one. So your water bill for commercial entities will also go up, too. So we have to do recharge sales tax on the water usage for commercial entities. We have to report that, too. Yeah. Tax, tax, tax. Fun, fun, fun.
I saw you stand up right and we got the.
Yep.
You told me you had nothing for the agenda.
I I'm.
Here I am anyways.
Yeah, you know, you're a fan of my butt.
Just the way it works.
When I ask, you should tell me that.
I I'm, I'm gonna, we're, we're gonna give you the chance.
Well, just real quick.
You know, you don't have to. You did prove the agenda with.
I I did, I did, did approve of the agenda and I.
You know, doesn't wanna mess with me. Then I'll just say that I think we should do this, this building.
You're, you're gonna tell me that.
No, what I wanna come to you with uh, tonight is. An equipment issue. You, I think, are the only one that were, that was on the council. Back when we got a motor backhoe at the time, because the one that we had, the brakes were completely out of. We'd drive it down the road and sail through intersections and we had to do something real quick.
Yeah, he only made right turns.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't good. We got a new one. We've had that for four years now, I believe it's been. What I would like to do, I've actually talked with uh, my, my representative at Cat down there. The market for. The market for the equipment that we have right now, the used market is actually really hot and. I've been talking to him about equipment and our needs and. Trying to shift to something better, and I think right now is about the best time that we're gonna ever have. They are offering us fifty-five thousand dollars for the machine. I believe we paid sixty-five for it four years ago. So that's a really good number. We would be looking at replacing it. So right now it's a loader backhoe. A little bro- loader bucket on the front, backhoe attachment on the back. It's an all right machine. It's what they had here. We've obviously, since I've been here, we've been. Updating our equipment, you know, moving it to more. Useful items, you know, especially with how things are now. What we would be looking at getting is what they refer to as a. A, a mini, more of a mid-sized.
Is what they refer to as a, a, a mini, more of a mid-sized loader. And a, a mini, a true excavator. Now, the loader itself is of the size that. You can still use the skid steer attachments that we have. Mount on to it, we can use those buckets, we can use the snow blower we have, all that stuff is usable on there. Um however, it obviously has a greater road speed than what our skid steer does. It's meant for. You know, up and down the road. I'm sure you probably use them a little bit at school for plowing and stuff, I would guess, maybe. Yeah, you got the big one, yeah. Those are nice. Unfortunately for us, they're too big. We demoed one a couple of years ago, just too big here. Um and then the excavator itself is, the footprint of that machine actually lets us still. Use the trailer that we bought a couple of years ago for the skid steer. So we're able to put it up on there and move it in and out of town as we need it for. Digging water mains, you know, whatever we have to do. The, the real, the couple of key things here that we would really be gaining, one is. Maneuverability with the equipment. Um if any of you have really ran a loader backo much, you know that they're a pretty cumbersome unit. They're. Really bouncy on the road, visibility is low, maneuverability is low. One of the, the key elements of the loader, I would say is. Loading snow i- is a, a big safety issue for us all the time here. It's just how it is with traffic, trying to load out of the road and everything. These loaders, the, the size of them and the way you sit in them, you've got, you know, a three sixty view of, of very, very small. Broken views, I'll, I'll say there. Now the excavator on that. You know, you go from the, the loader backhoe, you set up to try to do a dig. And you've got, you know, a, maybe a thirty degree range of motion. That's it. So depending on what you're digging, there's multiple digs going on. To get it how you need it, because you can't put material here, there. The, the sight line down into the hole, to be able to see who you've got in the hole and what you're doing is pretty poor. Um whereas with the, the mini itself, you know, you see in an excavator, you know how they work, you can spin. Three sixty all day long if you want. You're sitting right there, you know, everything's there, the maneuverability, everything. Long story short, I mean, I can go into, you know, whatever questions or anything you guys have. They have two used machines right now currently, and that's not to say that they're not gonna have more. I believe the loader is seventy five thousand and the excavator is eighty. Now, it could be flip flopped, but it's pretty close on price there. So that puts us at a hundred and fifty five thousand, I believe. Well, if they give us fifty five on trade, that brings us back down to a hundred thousand. For the past five years, four years, excuse me, we've been paying Christina just over ten thousand a year.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, sir.
Just off the top of my head, it's right around ten thousand a year that we've been paying. Been budgeted, we haven't had a problem. Um Christina and I had this conversation slightly and I just wanted to bring this to our work session. USDA loan is ten to fifteen years on new equipment. Used equipments, you know, a little less, they don't wanna do the fifteen from my understanding, probably a ten to twelve, it would be my guess. You know, we've already been spending the ten every year. Really, it's, it's just. A trade in and then lengthening our payment. To get the two new pieces of equipment that I think we really need and would kind of finish off. What we've been doing for the last five years of, of updating everything that has direly needed it. So, just kinda wanna get your guys' feedback. What do you think? Where are you at?
Three point seven five percent is what USDA will give on equipment right now, anywhere from ten to, ten to fifteen years. Is what Laura said.
How much is the bucket left? How much does it?
Oh, you could probably with that bucket, you'd be. Probably around two yards would be similar to what we're doing right now. Absolutely, go gravel into the dump truck, load snow into the dump truck, push snow, pile of snow. They can do all that. The excavator, I believe, has a sixteen foot reach on it. Straight out this way, roughly, they could translate it to about fourteen, just over fourteen depth wise. Which if you guys know, all of our water mains have to be a, pretty much a minimum of eight feet deep. That keeps them below the cross line. Most time when we're digging, we get down deeper than that, we'll find them at ten and then. Depending on the dig, we've gotta dig a hole next to it so we can drain water in and bucket that out. So. We're usually digging down around that ten to twelve foot quite often. Now I'll mention that these are both right at the threshold where they don't have the depth fluid. We keep them under that.
Little diesels in there.
Yeah, oh yeah, they're, they're definitely diesels.
What you thinking?
Nick, what are you thinking?
We're already spending ten thousand dollars a year in rental.
Well, it's not, it's not rental, we're. Yes, that's what we're paying right now. And like I said, it would, most likely it's gonna be almost the exact same payment. We're just going to be. Extending the payment out essentially is what's happening.
Yeah, what we're doing right now is a lease to own on that current backhoe.
Yeah, it's, excuse me, it gets a lot of people. They call it the lease like that, it's, we bought it, we're just paying it off, it's.
Right, there would most likely be a payoff amount. I believe we did this once with our last. Uh, public works trucks that we were leasing before we got the twenty ones, where there was one year where we had to make a half payment. In one year in order to buy the lease out.
Well, yes, with those, however, our current payment is with CAT Financial, correct? So, you know, there's a, an easy possibility that, okay, we have one payment left with them that comes off of. Our trade in, so there's no cash out of pocket essentially. I think it's a good move for us. I, I think it's. Really of, of no burden to the budget at all. It's merely an extension of what we've been doing. I'm looking for hopeful, hopeful feedback from you guys that I'm on the right track and you guys think that. We'll be good to go with that.
I'd like to see that paper.
What exactly would you like to see on paper?
What, all the numbers and the pictures and stuff?
Yep, not, and that's, you know, that's what me coming here tonight was wanting to, to gauge, you know, should I go further? I have. Yeah, I, I've got all the rough stuff. I just wanna know. Do you guys think that this is a good?
Definitely your time to go forward.
Do we have money and is it in the budget or, you know, so, or we gonna have a question, why is this over budget?
Well, like I said, it's, it should be real close to the same payment.
What's our financial obligation?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll have to start the USDA paper.
We just got the grader, so.
Well, as we got the grader, now remember, we got a, a nice, healthy grant on that grader.
A little bit, you know.
What's that?
This makes me think a little bit. So. But I'd like to see that work.
We'll get it rolling a bit more then. I still would like to gauge you two on where you're at though, because they, all three of them said something.
Nick, you said you gotta dig fourteen feet and how many times do I move that?
A lot. Doing it that way is not, it's not fun, it's not easy. It, it puts us. You know, with some of the tighter digs and stuff to where we won't even do them with that equipment. We'll, we'll call Juleson or someone. To come in with pretty much the exact machine we're looking at. Well, he, he might be there a while. You know, we're, we're still lighting fires on roads and digging in the winter. We're trying to get away from all that. We're trying to get more into this century with what we do.
Oh, it's overrated. Sanitize water to flush.
Mayor, what do you think? If I love something together for you, hopefully as much as I can by the council again. I know, I know for sure.
About a week, Mike, so if you wanna send me something to read.
I, I can do that. I'll for sure have, uh, you know, I can get you over. Definitely the model numbers. I know just off the top of my head, I believe the uh. The loader would be a, a CAT nine oh eight loader and it would be a CAT three oh six excavator. Now the exact pictures of the, the used equipment, I'm sure I can get those from uh. My CAT salesman, so you guys can see those. I'm not sure where they are. They're, they're in the state somewhere. Zigler, well, maybe in the state, you know, Zigler's got. You know, a few different options and then of course all of the, the dealerships kinda intertrade with themselves, so. But yeah, I can definitely get you, you know, as much as I can there. We'll see if, if Christina will kind of get some numbers from USDA in that time or not.
Three point seven five percent.
So that's.
End of fifteen years, depending on, depending on the equipment. It'll go up, that percentage will change on April one is what Laura said.
And it may go up, it may go down, nobody knows yet. Depending on what the Fed does. Well, thank you, I appreciate it, guys.
Now we've, we've listened to, how's the snow going? Another pitch?
We'll be, we'll be out there at four AM again. We'll be snow, sure would be nice to have that new equipment. Yeah, we'll be doing it tomorrow. Hopefully it, it's, I don't know that we're gonna get much more tomorrow. It would be nice if we could just do it. Tomorrow morning one more time and, and be done, but most likely if it does snow a bit, we'll probably run Wednesday morning at four o'clock too. Get out there before there's too many people around. You know, I don't know, Don, you're busy. I can believe it, there's areas that the wind is really pushed into. Yeah, we'll be up your little stub road there at some point tomorrow morning.
Alright. All favor. Thank you.
Why is it really?
Yeah, no school tomorrow, you learn.
I wondered when that would finally pop up. My son is gonna be so happy.
Yeah, I bet you, he's doing a happy dance right now.
Oh, that's probably why I asked, I've watched, been watching it all day.
All these people know, I don't know.
Yahoo, look at that. Oh, you gotta trust it.
Gotta try.
He took the class in school. Not lasted, and by law, he can be out.
I suppose, you know what, it's probably over freaking hell, boy, that he's not sick now here.